All right, call in the Moore County Board, School Board of Education work session for March 3rd, 2025 into session. If I could have a motion, please. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I guess that's it. Well, we need to approve the agenda. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
In a second? All in favor? Aye. And Ms. Bruno, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance today? Today during our moment of silence, I do want to recognize one of our team members, a maintenance gentleman, Luke Blanchard, who lost his life last week. His family is precious and in need of our thoughts and prayers. And also, Dr. Calcutt had a loss in her family as well, so if we keep them in our prayers. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now we'll move on to pending action and discussion and turn it over to Dr. Locklear and his team that's coming up.
Thank you Vice Chair Davis. Our first item is out-of-state field trips. There's two items. Two out-of-state field trips for consideration today, and I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sinan and Ms. Metcalf.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We have two requests for field trips, both from Union Pines High School. The JROTC would like to attend the Leadership Academy at the Citadel in Charleston, June 23rd through the 27th. And then the Union Pines Student to Student Team would like to attend the annual MSEC Global Training Summit in Washington from July 6th through July 10th.
And these come with my recommendation.
Any discussion?
Thank you. As you know, the first MSEC that Moore County Schools Military Children attended had a couple controversial speakers. Do they, have they? And then last year, we had to approve this prior to the speaking, the list of speakers of the agenda of the conference being published. Has that been published?
No, sir. This will be the same situation, and as we've done every year, as the parents are informed every time that, when it comes out, and then every time it's updated, and parents have the right to say which sessions their children will attend or which they do not want them to attend.
So just to make the issue clear, right? Two years ago, maybe three years ago, this same organization, the Military Child Education Coalition, had two militant pro-LGBTQ activists as their keynote speaker. I mean, that's their history. They had two radical LGBT, I mean, that was their self-described mission, who were speakers at this conference. And measures were put into place because of, well, they were the keynote speakers. And then subsequent to that, we've been asked to approve students attending this event with a checkered past without even knowing what the agenda's going to be. I'm not making a judgment of that. I'm just restating the facts.
Yeah, since as soon as that email comes out, we immediately send it to the parents of the students who are going. And then anytime that email is, or the items are updated, we send them additional emails. And at any point, they can, you know, they decide where their kids go.
Further discussion? Moving on. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, board members. Now I'll get, call Ms. Purvis up to present recommendations for Community Learning Center at Pinney Roof Repair and Replacement. Mrs. Purvis has alluded to this. It's the final step for our completion of a renovation at CLC at Pinney. And we're certainly appreciate the support from our county as well, being used by premium funding to do it. So, Ms. Purvis, I'll let you present this, and this does come with my recommendation.
Yes, sir. So this repair and replacement will be on the main building, which is the classroom building of Pinney that has already been updated on the inside. And it will be on the cafeteria there at Pinney as well. So it'll be two buildings there, the main classroom and the cafeteria. We had informal bids, Dry Tech Commercial, $425,984. Fox Hill Construction, $386,768. McCray Roofing, $542,800. The lowest responsive bidder was Fox Hill Construction. They'll complete both buildings at the same time. Each roof will have a 30-year warranty, and we do recommend that Fox Hill get the contract in the amount of $386,768. This will be paid for with those county bond premium funds that we use to do our renovations at Pinney. So there's some remaining funds there that will go towards this to complete this Pinney project. Fox Hill Construction is from North Carolina. They are out of Wilmington. Questions? We're, this summer, we'll let kids get out, and then it'll be completed over the summer. All right. Thank you.
I think, I think, Mr. Johnson.
No, it's all right. I was just, I'd asked this before, but just want to kind of publicly ask again. So this is the cafeteria side and not the other side of that building.
So the cafeteria is here. The IT building and child nutrition are separate.
Oh, okay. I got you. I got you.
Okay, so that IT building is not connected. There's a catwalk that connects the two of them.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
But that IT building is a separate building, and we, a couple of years ago, did a silicone roof on that IT building to give it a little more life because we had some leaks there. We needed to update it because we know we're staying there a little bit longer. We do need to look at and look towards some plans for a new IT building, so that's something we'll be looking into. But this does not include that IT building or child nutrition.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's that? Currently? I don't know. I don't know. I assume not.
No.
No.
It's not.
I assume it's not. Yeah.
All right.
Jenny, is this, is this the roof where the birds were eating it?
This is not the roof where the birds were eating it.
Okay, what happened to that roof?
That roof where the birds were eating it, we had to have the folks come back and reapply something. That's the silicone roof that we're talking about of the IT building. And if you'll remember, if you've toured that IT building, it, it's in bad shape. And so as we look towards the future, that would be a great spot that we might be able to do a design build and, and do something for IT.
Okay, okay.
So we put that silicone on there, but yes, we did have to have those folks come back and revisit that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
I am curious about the birds, but I'll ask later.
No, it's really interesting.
I can just add that they're not to be trifled with.
They're just certain things you don't ask questions about. Birds eating the roof, you just, was it taken care of? Yes, and you just move on.
Thank you, Ms. Hanlon. Ms. Sinan is now up to present. This is, the board sees this each and every year as our standard day schedule, which basically means the time that our kids are in school and staff are in school. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Sinan to present this. There's no major changes from years past, and it comes with my recommendation. Ms. Sinan?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So each year, we bring the standard day schedule for the next year to the board for approval. We review and we update, so principals have reviewed their times to make sure that they're consistent with what they'll do for next year. Just as a reminder, the school day schedule must consist of no less than six hours of actual instructional time for students and an eight-hour workday for staff. What you'll see on the standard day schedule is the times that the buses load, unload, when buses are back on campus, when teachers arrive, when teachers depart. You'll also see when the instructional day starts, ends, and then the lunchtimes. There were no major changes this year. What you'll see on here, in addition to last year, is the more innovative high school schedule, so that has been, that has been updated and placed in here under the high schools. What you'll see with that is we don't have, the only thing we don't have for that is all buses arrive back on campus because buses don't come back to that campus to park. So there's not a time for that. Connect Academy schedule is on there, and just as a reminder, Southern Middle and Elise Middle, we've not brought their calendars forward yet for their restart, but they plan to, we plan to bring that to you when we do the calendars. And they will plan to continue to use their calendar flexibility as a restart school for next year.
Discussion, questions? Go ahead.
I have a question about the bus schedule.
Okay.
This is completely, completely off-the-wall question, but I see bus unloaded at 7:30, 7:00 AM for elementary schools, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if buses unload at 7:00, what time does the average bus route start? Six, 6:00 o'clock? I mean, what time do they start picking up students?
I am glad Ms. Purvis is still in here.
So the earliest route leaves at about 5:15, picking kids up at about 5:30. And not all of them, but the earliest ones, the longest.
On the average, what would you say, like since?
On the average, about 6:00. And that 7:00 o'clock time there, I can tell you, that's not when most buses get to school. That is when schools allow buses to drop students off and teachers are ready for them. Most of our buses are not going to arrive on campus until about 15 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes before class starts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a question?
I was gonna, my question was going to be around buses too, but on the other end of the spectrum is, are we, are we pretty consistent with our, all buses arrive back to campus times? I know that there are situations occasionally, but, but we're, we're running a tight ship, tight schedule there.
Of course. Exactly. Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Sinan. And now we have Ms. Fall, who will be presenting an item that the board, new board members, this will be new for you, but our returning board members will recall, each year we bring our alternative accountability model participations. Basically, how is our Community Learning Center at Pinney Alternative School assessed by the state in North Carolina in the Accountability Program? There are alternative options that we can choose, and the board has approved the same option that we're presenting to you again to approve that's required to submit to the State Board of Education. So, Ms. Fall, I'll turn it over to you, and this comes with my recommendation.
That was my whole presentation. I will add that the option that the CLC would like to use is the same one we have used before, which is Alternative Model B, which is 20% student persistence, their ability to stay in school, come back and stay in school, 20% on their achievement, which is their proficiency level, and then 60% on growth. The second piece to that is that if we don't have enough data in order to calculate those data points, how are we going to measure? And there are two options. And again, the Community Learning Center would like to keep their own data rather than using a different school's data, and so they would like to use three years of data, although I will note that we have not had to use that in anybody's memory. So we've always had enough data at the point to do that. But we do have to put in what we would do if we didn't have enough data. So I'm here to answer any questions you have about the alternative accountability model.
Questions?
I was going to ask what, what, what would be the scenario for us to not have enough data? But since you said we've not had that in the past.
Sure. If we did not have enough students who took an EOC or EOG, so you have to have a certain percentage, it's usually 30 students total in order to get a calculation under that, and they're just not as confident in the number, and so they don't feel comfortable using it.
Thank you.
I just had a quick, quick question. The 20% student persistence, how is that calculated?
It's based on if they can maintain their enrollment. So a lot of the students that are at CLC are students who are either at risk or previous dropouts that have returned, and so it's do they stay through the remainder of that year, and so they're persisting through the end of the school year.
So they finish the year out? And how, what's the percentage of kids that finish the year out?
I do not have that number off the top of my head, but it is high.
I'm just saying.
Yes, that is how it's calculated. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And on this next page, Charlie, you'll see the history of how we've been rated, really, over the last 10 years. So just for your information.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Fall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now we have Ms. Gephardt and Dr. Metcalf. These are core instruction K5 literacy materials, which we're bringing forward for a recommendation for purchase for next year. The state does provide funding for literacy materials, and that's what we're requesting to use those funds for this. So I'll turn it right over to Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Gephardt.
Donna, she is the expert.
So we're excited. Rachel will be bringing in some materials to pass out as she walks in the door. We are very excited. These are renewed purchases from previous, from this past school year. So we are requesting a purchase of K3 Core 95 Phonics as our core instructional program. So with that, each kid gets a workbook as well as teacher manuals, get teacher manual and a program that supports the development and implementation of this program. We also are, are planning to purchase or requesting the purchase of what we have had in place for second grade through fifth grade reading program. So second grade is the North Carolina Ready Book, so that they have a workbook that looks very much like they're going to have with the magnetic reader, which is grades three, four, five. So these materials, Senate Bill 387 has each district write a literacy intervention plan. So in Senate Bill 387, we write that literacy intervention plan, and part of that literacy intervention plan is looking at core materials, looking at supplemental materials and intensive materials. So as Ms. Sinan grabs a whole bunch of wonderful resources, we will definitely pass these around. You'll see some teacher additions, lots of supports in both of these curriculums, and it does support our literacy intervention plan of core. What does core look like in Moore County schools? So these are all core materials. We do have supplemental to go along with the core phonics. We do have supplemental and intensive materials as well.
I'll be glad to take any questions.
It's, it's, that is our phonics program. So that is the phonics program, and there are very, there are six different sets, series of those phonics books.
Sorry. They were on book C.
That, that would be, yes, those are the multiple books for the core phonics program. So by this point in time, we should be somewhere around C or D.
Okay. Yeah, they were doing the soft Gs and hard Gs.
Yeah, the various. And again, this is paid for with our O-85 monies that the state gives us to ensure that every district can implement that literacy intervention plan. There are two components to O-85. One is our, getting our good teachers for summer school as bonuses with that. There's another piece with O-85, which is the continuation of letters training. So O-85 supports our continued endeavors with letters, and then it also allows for us to purchase literacy materials for core, supplemental, or intervention.
Okay, this all went by me a little bit fast. So we have, and you, and you just said the key words, core, supplemental, and?
Intensive.
Intervention.
Yeah, and it, the core supplemental and intensive are part of the intervention.
Okay, so I, I thought I knew what I was listening to, and then you used both intervention and core in a way that I didn't expect. Can, can you go back over that and give me a little perspective?
The materials that you were looking at, they are that Core 95 Phonics materials. That is core material. That is core curriculum that if you go in any of our classrooms, you're going to see the Core 95% phonics. That is core. But we also have of the Core 95% phonics, they have a totally different kit. It's called a Phonics Library Kit. That is an intervention kit that many of our schools have. So it would be to supplement, what the literacy intervention plan wants us to do is whatever we have as our core material, that our supplemental and intensive match what that core is. So that, those programs definitely match that. But what you are looking at is what every kindergarten, first, second, or third grader would have, depending on the grade level, that they would have in, at their hands, working through that workbook with the teacher doing a 30, 35-minute lesson daily. And then they have throughout the units, there'll be a phonics assessment, and we actually analyze that assessment and look at the development of that phonics skill to make sure that we are closing any gaps before, by using some of those other resources. You're welcome.
Thank you for explaining. I, I looked at all of the, the estimates, or whatever they are, the quotes, and saw that there was a classroom set plus workbooks for all the students for all the classrooms. And so I figured it must be core materials.
It is. And then we have to do a digital subscription to let the teacher continue with their PowerPoint. So each teacher also gets a downloadable PowerPoint. Lot of resources to support our teachers.
And this is week by week? So there's, this is one week, right?
Yep, that, well, no, that's probably, there's probably six, seven, eight units in that.
I see seven lessons?
Yep, seven lessons.
So, gotcha.
Yeah. But that would be several, you would chunk that throughout the week.
Right. And one of the reasons I wanted to take a look at it was just because, you know, we've had some questions about writing and students being able to write, so it's good to see all the written responses within the core materials. And then in this, I really like the, kind of goes even more into the writing.
Yeah, it does.
Some of these intervention materials, so.
That writing to learn is so critical, and we're, as a teacher, when we're getting them to do those writing to those specific prompts, that really lets us know if the kids are comprehending that material. But we are attending to grammar embedded in. Instead of having a grammar lesson separately, I might remind kids, remember, and I'm stealing this from one of the teachers I work closely with, she's got a little, a little, call it the pocket proofreading marks. Have you looked at capital letters? Have you made sure there's some type of ending punctuation? Have you attended to where there might need to be a capital letter or a not capital letter in the middle of a sentence? So we embed that grammar structure within that.
And is there anything precluding a teacher from pulling just a piece of this to use?
They can, they definitely, we do encourage them to use the writing opportunities because it really lets you know if the kids understood this.
Because it's got these checklists that go right to the standards, right here. So you can see clearly what they're working on. So, yeah, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing us.
You're welcome.
Steve, to reinforce what you, your question, last week, Pauline mentioned, we were at Cameron Elementary School, and they had a similar workbook. They were in the kindergarten. And I was just blown away by the completeness of this, the full sentences correctly spelled, correctly punctuated. In fact, it was a young fellow who, who was a English with second language type, who started up clueless at the beginning of the year. up clueless at the beginning of the year, and last week he caught up with his peers and was doing the same work. Pretty good stuff. In fact, they integrated the punctuation, different punctuations as they went along, and they were all fired up by the exclamation point.
They need to be.
So anyway, good, good stuff.
It is good.
Further questions or discussion? All right, I did go online and look at this. I didn't get a book, but I already knew what, it's okay. Yeah, I went online and looked at it, and I did see that a lot of writing was involved with it, and I think it'll be, you've done a good job.
We're excited about continuing this. This will be the second year for full implementation of Core Phonics, ninety-five percent phonics, and the third, the second year of full implementation of magnetic reading. So I'm very excited to continue to look at our data and see what's next.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
And our teachers love these resources, so it's a lot of support for teachers.
Let me ask you this. The, I really, you know, when I saw these a year or so ago, I mean, this was like really exciting, right? The workbooks and, you know, just all this stuff that the students have to do. What did we have before we had these? Did we, here's my, here's my point. When we went from old school textbooks, you know, backpack full, to computers, to this, was there a time period where like we didn't have like great workbooks like this? And what was before this?
Our phonics program prior to Core 95 percent phonics was Letterland, and it did not have a workbook, but the kids went through a explicit routine with the teachers and then had the practice afterwards. With our reading program, it was pretty much just the Moore County units. We did not necessarily have a consistent concise book per se. We had some teachers doing novels, but it was more of a choice piece, and we just felt like bringing some consistency across those standards help, help our students to really achieve those standards.
Yeah, this seems well worth the money, you know, for many reasons.
It is.
I'll just, I'll just reiterate that, that, you know, a lot of times they had to pull, you know, they would go for writing prompts and find them on websites and then pull them and use them. Kids could still write. Right. Yeah, I agree. I'm sorry they're so heavy to bring in here.
Thank you, Ms. Gephardt.
Thank you, Donna. And I call Ms. Edmonds up. We have, as the board is familiar with, the, each quarter you receive an amended budget resolution based on any changes in the budget that's taken place since the last quarter. Ms. Edmonds does have some changes to bring to your attention, majority of those from the state, where we've received revenue from the state that we did not have on our budget. And so although we may have expected it, we don't load it into our budget until we receive it. And so, Ms. Edmonds, I'll let you walk through the changes since our last budget amendment and just come with my recommendation. Thank you, team.
Thank you. So for state public school funds, we're at one hundred two million one hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. That is an increase of one million seven hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred nine dollars. For our local current fund, we are at forty-one million seven hundred four thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, and there's no change. Federal programs, we're at sixteen million seven ninety-three three oh one. That's an increase of a hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. For local capital funds, we're at six million four hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars. There is no change. For school nutrition fund, it's at eight million three hundred thirty thousand five hundred dollars. There is no change. With after-school care fund is one million five hundred thousand, again, no change. And local operations fund is at eleven million seven hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars, which was an increase of two hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars. The total amended budget is now at one hundred eighty-eight million six hundred seventy-nine thousand eighty-one dollars, which is an increase of two million one hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. We can take a look at the revision details. First want to start off by saying that we, for state funds, it is revision detail, revision fifty-three through eighty-three. So we have had eighty revisions from the state. Just wanted to keep that in mind. One other piece, when we are creating beginning state budgets, we do use a projected based on the prior year's base budget, and due to the uncertain nature of some of our allotments, we only include guaranteed funds, and we typically wait until those funds are allotted before budgeting for them. So just keep that in mind. For PRC oh oh one, classroom teachers, that was an increase of thirty thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. That's new teacher orientation and NCVPS Sherup. We had driver training of twenty-six ninety-seven, which is an allotment adjustment for the certified budget. Thirteen and fourteen were ABC transfers due to vacancies, and then for sixteen was summer reading camp. That at one hundred forty thousand two dollars was for the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget. PRC thirty-two, children with disabilities, that is three hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars, and this is an allotment adjustment per certified budget. Just keep in mind, last year we only received nine million, nine million nine sixty-one five forty-five in adjustments, so this is quite a bit more than I would have expected. For thirty-nine, the school safety grants, and forty, both school safety grants, they're not guaranteed, that's why they weren't included in the original budget. Forty-six and forty-eight are third grade reading bonuses for teachers, and then forty-eight is the principal and other teacher performance bonuses. Those are specific to the teachers and/or principals, so those fluctuate each year. PRC fifty-six, which is transportation of pupils, this is some contingency money that we applied for, so we were not guaranteed to receive that. PRC sixty-three, children with disabilities, that one also fluctuates, and that is approvals as of December twenty-four and February twenty-five. PRC sixty-six, that's the teacher assistant tuition reimbursement program. It is an additional thirty-four thousand, it is thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars for TTA tuition. Last year we received only eighty-seven hundred, so that is quite a difference. Then for literacy intervention, it was based on students retained twice. L.A. stop-arm cameras, it's not guaranteed we do apply for that. And then the last one, O-89, children with disabilities, it's a special state reserve, so we do not receive that one each year. For local current expense fund, there was no increase. Federal programs did increase by a hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cent. These were allocations of unallotted funds for seventeen. There was just a, where we had, did a projected amount versus the actual allotment for fifty, there was a change of seven hundred seventy dollars. For O-82, for state improvement grant, that was October and January approvals. For Title I, PRC one oh seven, that was grant years twenty-four of reallocation. For PRC one eleven, that's the Title I language acquisition, that's the initial allotment approvals. And PRC one fifteen, that is our targeted support and improvement, that is initial allotment. The one eighteen is special needs, I mean, it is federal allocations per the EC office, and PRC one nineteen was also federal allocations per the EC office. For the school, let me have this one, hold on one second. Yeah, capital outlay, there was no change. School nutrition, there was no change. After-school care, no change. For restricted revenue, there was an additional two hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. For the K-3 teacher supply that we received from the county was forty thousand. PRC four thirty-five was Digital Champion Grant. It was thirty thousand seven hundred eight dollars forty-five cent. That was a grant that we received. The SVPP twenty-one radio grant was a radio grant reimbursement that we received. And then PRC eight sixty-nine, that safety grant, that's the RTA maximum administrative fee that we can charge. And then the next item is the projected fund balance.
Can I ask, just a couple questions on that last one? Just while I'm thinking about it, because I might lose it in a minute. The, so the Digital Champions Grant, I hadn't caught that one before. Is that one that was through like Digital Teaching and Learning Department? Like those grants that they, that they run? Was that like?
Yes, it's from the CDPI, and run through there, and it's to support. I couldn't tell you the details specifically. We'd have to bring some information back to the board on that or share it back out.
Well, I was just curious. I think that's what that was. I think I'd heard about that one. And then the, the funding for TA reimbursement, does that, does that mean that we had more TAs applying for that reimbursement, or less TAs applying for that reimbursement this year than last?
We'd have to get you that information, because it does, it impacts another department besides mine. This is just, I was just not taking the difference in how much we received last year as compared to this year.
Okay. I was just curious to see, you know, if our TAs were taking advantage of that program, because I think that's a really cool, really cool program.
It's definitely something that Ms. Burton and Dr. Patterson are always working to try to find any, any of our folks, whether they're substitutes or TAs, and recruit them into teaching. So that's a pathway that they try to take, you know, take advantage of if we can, but we can get a little, little info back to the board on that question.
I mean, we got a Budget Committee meeting, we could just.
Sure, we could have it by Thursday.
If you, if that's workable.
We could easily have that by Thursday, yeah, no problem. And the Digital Champion, we may have had that in the board update, but we can pull that back out and share it back again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tangentially related, but important, item eighty-seven up there, stop-arm cameras on buses. Do our buses currently have stop-arm cameras?
Ms. Purvis?
Right. What do we do with somebody running a red light, a stop sign on a bus? What do we do?
Ms. Purvis, I'm sorry. Will you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
And I appreciate the latitude. I just, this is a, there's a lot of people interested in traffic safety and.
So currently, those twenty-eight stop-arm cameras are on buses that are in areas where we would have the most trouble with that, those high-traffic areas. Those but, stop-arm cameras take a picture. When that happens, the driver immediately hits a button that is a timestamp, so we know what that is, and then that is turned into the sheriff's department.
Any idea approximately how frequently that happens a week?
I could ask. I would hate to tell you and be wrong, but I could ask.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I did have one question. Does anybody else have questions before Ms. Edmonds moves on? The monies that are for K through three from the Moore County, how are they divided up per school or standard?
It was based on ADM.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and the board may recall that our county commissioners did push this money out. This was a unique to this year. Our Board of Commissioners wanted to send some additional monies to our elementary schools to support resources in the classroom, and so we dispersed that based on the size of elementary schools, equally dispersed based on that, and then principals and the teams of teachers then went from there.
So we'll look at the projected fund balance. Fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four was at five million three hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars, and we had assigned for inventories three hundred sixty-one thousand two twenty-six. Assigned for accounts receivable was a hundred and five thousand four fifty-seven, and our assigned fund balance for this fiscal year is two million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, making our total unassigned fund balance two million twenty thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. The balance sheet as of March twenty-eighth showed a net gain. We had projected revenues and expenses, making our projected fund balance gain two million sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety dollars. With our projected unused fund balance, with assigned fund balance, our projected fund balance for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five is six million nine hundred eighty-four thousand six forty-five. You take away the two million floor, we would be at four million nine hundred eighty-four thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Any discussion, questions? Thank you, Ms. Edmonds.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds, appreciate it. And I now will call out Dr. Metcalf. As the board may recall, last, at the March third work session, appreciated your engagement and time. I think we spent almost two hours of you re-engaging in the strategic plan draft, giving additional feedback, and now there is a revised draft as a result of that work that we would like to send out to the public in a portal for their feedback. And I'm gonna let Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Stewart kind of walk us through that, and coming to you with a recommendation to post this out for feedback, so we can bring additional input to you next month. Mike?
Thank you, sir. Yes, the work on the district strategic plan continues. We did have a great meeting on March third, spent a couple of hours. Dr. Stewart worked with you to get your suggestions. She has updated, this is, the version is three twenty-six twenty-five, and we've highlighted in red for you, so you have opportunity to review the changes that you suggested that we make at that time. I wanted to talk about the next steps. So our ask today is for you at your next board meeting to approve this draft for community feedback. This is not the final draft. This is a draft in that process, which we would get community feedback on. We would open up a survey portal between April eighth and April twenty-eighth. Obviously, we would advertise to the community through social media. Charlie would do some work around that. We would also have our schools put out the messaging through their normal school-based communication to allow people the opportunity to go to the survey and add their input as well. We'll take it to our, our groups, our advisory councils, the teacher advisory council, the support staff advisory council. We'll have our schools work with their school improvement teams over the, over the next month to review it and provide input as well, our principal advisory group as well. We'll bring back all of that feedback to you at the May fifth work session, to have the opportunity to review the community's feedback on this particular draft. Then what we would do is open up an opportunity for you to respond to that and make suggestions of any changes. We would bring a recommended strategic plan back to you on June second, with the hope that you approve and endorse the strategic plan for twenty-five, twenty-seven at your June ninth regular board meeting. So that is the process, the next steps, and are hopeful that you allow us to put this out for community input. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, discussion?
I was gonna ask, I think when we advertise it, there are probably gonna be people out there that are specifically passionate about one thing in here. And so if you could somehow package the communication, letting people know, you know, where to find it in the, in the form, and I see that everything is kind of required on the, so, and maybe just telling them, you can mark each of these, I have no opinion, and just being specific about that, because I could see people trying to get to the thing that they're really interested in. So that's only feedback I have.
Thank you.
Well, it's gotta, I neither agree nor disagree with, with each of them. And so like if I was a Uh, well, that's similar, I guess. Yeah, I neither agree nor disagree, and so they've got that in there. But like if I'm a parent that's passionate about transportation and I want to express my feelings about transportation, you gotta mark that for each one before you get to the, get to the bottom, if that makes sense.
We'll look into that. Appreciate that feedback. Thank you, Mr. John.
No problem.
No further questions or discussion? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Ms. Davis, if it's okay, may I move with Ms. Edmonds to present the revised superintendent's proposed budget?
Of course, yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis, board members. Appreciate the opportunity, Ms. Edmonds and I, to come back to you today and present our revised, my revised superintendent's proposed budget that will, based on your review, potential assignments become the budget that you approve as your preliminary budget next week. And so pleased to present this to you today. Had the And so pleased to present this to you today, had the opportunity to meet with members of the board in two-by-twos to continue the discussion on this, to share the feedback we got from our online portal, which Ms. Edmonds will be sharing here in just a moment. But when we talk about our budget, we always want to start out with what our district strategic plan is and the vision, mission, core beliefs, and strategic goals of our district that drive our work. And our budget is meant to support that work and support the ultimate success of our students. And so our vision in Moore County schools is that we strive to be the standard of excellence in education in North Carolina. We know we're looking at revising our strategic plan, but this is our current plan, our current vision. Our mission, which guide us each day, is all students will graduate with the skills, knowledge, character, and education, become proud and successful citizens of the United States of America. The core beliefs that we share as a school district is we believe successful schools are essential for thriving communities and that every student can learn and succeed. Education, employment, and enlistment are equally honorable pursuits for the future lives of our students. Our schools provide a safe, respectful, orderly, and caring environment conducive to learning. We engage our parents and community in the education of our students, and our educators are empowered to meet the learning needs of all students. The strategic goals that we've worked on over the last two years, and we've made considerable progress. These are stretched goals, they're meant to be stretched goals to drive us and improve us as a district, and we've made considerable progress. There are seven of those strategic plan goals that the board approved in twenty-twenty-two. Increase the number of schools meeting or receiving growth from fourteen to twenty-three. We have grown that to seventeen. Increase overall composite grade level proficiency by ten percentage points from fifty-six point six to sixty-six point six. We've improved to over sixty-two percent. Increase the context ranking for composite grade level proficiency from twenty-third place in the state to the top five percent out of a hundred and fifteen LEAs, local education agencies in the state. We have improved almost into the top five percent. We went from twenty-third place to tenth place in the, in the state. Increase the number of tenth-grade students reading at or above grade level as measured by intercourse lexile reading level by ten percentage points from eighty-one percent to ninety-one percent. While we had gains in the first year, we kind of went backwards a little bit, so we've maintained flat there around eighty-one percent. Fifth goal, close the achievement gap of, of our black students, Hispanic students, economic disadvantage, and students with disabilities by ten percentage points from their respective twenty-one, twenty-two achievement scores, while also increasing the achievement of all students. We have made progress there, but we have not closed those gaps by ten points. Goal six, increase the number of students who complete a career technical education cluster. That's a student who's taken at least four career courses within the same career pathway. And a goal was to increase that by fifteen percent from four hundred and forty-one students to five hundred and ten. We've surpassed that goal this past year, having five hundred and fifteen students who completed that. The last goal, decrease the number of district schools with a school performance grade of an F from two to zero. We have decreased that from two to one. And so as we look to setting up our school district's budget, and really looking at that from a local perspective, it's something that we're very fortunate in Moore County, is to have a great education system. And that's really one of our greatest assets as a community. A reason why this is a great place to move, great place to raise a family, is because of the great school district we have here, great choices we have here, and we also have an incredible community college. On top of that, our top ten school district is our county's second-largest employer. And I, I don't think we can, you know, we need to remember that. We are county's second-largest employer, and so an investment, that local budget investment into our Moore County schools is an investment in our county, investment to keep our economy thriving, both from making it a great place to live, but also a great place to work and be. There's three key narratives that I continue to drive forward when looking at this budget. The first is the impact of fixed cost increases. That's those increases in salaries and benefits that we're estimating based on historical data. And that essentially means we're taking care of our people, so they can take care of our students. The second item that you'll see come up in this budget, in the revised budget based on board feedback, is the inclusion of one expansion item, which is the unfreezing of the curriculum specialist position that was one of the positions frozen last year in the budget, bringing that back to support the key, important work of our curriculum and instruction department supporting teachers. And as always, as I've always have, utilizing a lean budget approach to do all we can to moderate the local budget's impact on the use of fund balance. How much fund balance savings account do we need to use as a school district to balance our budget in order to move it forward into the next fiscal year? And we'll do that through reinvesting vacancy savings. What fund balance that was appropriated this year, if we don't use that, we're reinvesting that into the next year in order to balance our budget. And so that's that reinvestment of vacancy savings. Majority of that comes from vacancy savings. We also looked again this year. Last year, we found about six hundred thousands in savings. This year, we found five hundred and seventy thousand. So again, looking at ways to reduce and find efficiencies and savings in our budget. We're conservatively projecting the revenues we're expecting from the county using the number they've given us, which is three percent growth on revenues based on the county funding formula. So we're utilizing that in this budget, and we're estimating those fixed cost increases again based on historical data. We don't have the known factors from the state. We don't know exactly where state pay raises are gonna land yet, because the state hasn't approved their budget. We don't know exactly where benefit increases is gonna land yet, because the state hadn't approved their budget. That's one of those unknowns that we have as a school district, because of your timeline of when you have to approve a budget in April, where the statement had approved their budget to October. And so that is a key unknown that we have to play with here as a, as a school district. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Edmonds, let her walk through the feedback that we received of the school district on the superintendent's preliminary budget that was presented in early March. I'm gonna let Ms. Edmonds walk through that, as well as some key background information to my proposed budget. Ms. Edmonds?
This is the public comments that we did receive from the web portal. The web portal, just a reminder, was open for public comments related to the budget from March fourth to March seventeenth. We received a total of seventeen responses. One of the areas was teachers and other certified staff. We had five respondents. Two were about compensation. One talked about teacher supplement increase. One talked about better teacher pay. Two talked about staffing and support of those two. One talked about understaffing in support roles, and another talked about student mental health support. Two talked about the school calendar. One was interested in earlier start and end considerations. Another talked about having a preference for that traditional calendar. We had parents, guardians, a student, of current students. We had seven of those respondents. One talked about nutrition. They had a strong objection to sugary drinks. There were six that talked about the budget and funding. Two were talking about overall funding, transparency, and ways to involve the public. One talked about spending efficacy. One talked about, one was criticized the funding formula. One talked about the arts program budget, and one was about the IEP and AIG support. Two were in response to transportation, and they both talked about bus service issues. One was redistricting and the negative impact of redistricting. Two were school infrastructure. One was about older school conditions, one about road signage. Two was about school calendar. One talked about an earlier start and end date, and another talked about fall break. Next is central office or school administration. We had three respondents. All three talked about budgeting process, budgeting challenges, fiscal responsibility, and office staff step increases. One talked about staffing, bringing back that CNI specialist. One was general support, support of the proposed budget. We had one community responded. They talked about budget adequacy and the budget covering only basic needs, and they did have criticism of the funding formula. Two, they also talked about student support, IEP, AIG support issues, and transportation program issues. Next, we'll go over some background information for the superintendent's revised proposed budget. First, we'll start with the revenues. With our local funding formula agreement, we have our local funding formula for twenty-four, twenty-five is thirty-nine million, fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Removing eight hundred thousand for the capital outlay pass-through and fifty thousand for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services pass-through. It leaves our fund two appropriation for this year, thirty-eight million, two hundred four thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. When you increase that by three percent, that leaves us with forty million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars with that funding formula. When you remove the capital outlay pass-through and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services pass-through, that leaves thirty-nine million, three hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars, which is an increase in funding of one million, one hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars.
And just again, the why behind the three percent is because that's the percentage that the commissioners and county manager expressed we could reasonably see each year in growth. And so that's why we continue to use that number when we're projecting out, and so far have perceived that.
I've, I have a question on this, and you guys may not know the answer, but I'd like to ask it anyway. The way the county commissioners achieve the three percent year-over-year growth is, obviously, our tax base is increasing and proper, because more construction and increased property values, sales taxes increasing. So the way the county commissioners are controlling the revenue growth of three percent is as tax revenues go up, they're lowering the property tax rate significantly, right? So that, you know, the property tax remains revenue-neutral for the citizens, which is good if you're a property taxpayer in the county. I'm, I'm not criticizing that. But do we know, over the last several years, what the percentage cut has been in the property tax? Has it been a, a ten percent cut in the, I, I, I'm just making these figures up. Has it been a ten percent cut in the rate, or a five percent, or a twenty percent cut in the tax rate? Does anyone know?
I wouldn't know offhand. I, we could go back and look at the rate when the board agreed with the county commissioners. I believe it was thirty-three and a half cent tax rate. I don't want to misspeak. Don't quote me on that. That's off the top of my head. But we have heard from the commissioners that they want to keep us at that same rate, meaning we went under an agreement at a certain tax rate of thirty-eight and a half percent. And so I do think there is a, a agreement and a commitment from our board of commissioners to keep us at that same rate, thus getting at least three percent.
Right, no, look, there's, look, there's clearly an agreement that we get a percentage of the revenue. The reason I ask what the percentage cut in tax rate is, is because we're gonna have to go to the people of Moore County for school construction money. And, you know, how big is this? Well, the property tax buy is seventy-three million dollars, right? And let's say, let's say we need twenty million dollars a year. Okay, well, how much was the property tax rates? How much were the property tax rates cut? Let's say they were cut twenty percent. I'm just making that number up, I have no idea. Let's say the rate was cut twenty percent. To make the math easy, let's say it was cut thirty percent over the last couple of years, right? Again, I'm just making those numbers up. Then what we would do, and let's say we need twenty million a year, then the message that we would give to the taxpayers are, we need twenty million dollars a year to execute our school capital construction plan. What that means to you as the taxpayer, when most localities were, were taking the increase in the property tax base and not giving the citizens a tax cut, you know, that's what most municipalities do, that's what most counties have done in order to finance this school construction program, what, what the taxpayers of Moore County would need to do. You know, using that example is just not give back your property tax rate decrease for the next five years, or whatever the period would be, and that would fund your school construction, right? So we just need to know that number. We need to know...
Actually pulled up for the past five years, so in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, our property tax rate was fifty-one cents per hundred dollars. And then, this is back when we were paying off the bonds. And then forty-eight cents, forty-eight and a half cents was twenty-two, twenty-three. And then they dropped it to thirty-three cents in twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-one cents last year.
So as an example, right, and again, this is back of back of napkin math.
Microphone, your microphone.
Again, this is back of napkin math, so please don't hold this to me, but it'll be pretty close.
Forty percent.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know what, I could have done that in my head. Had I, right, thank you. You know, I was sitting there thinking, I could probably do this in my head. But no, so forty percent. So literally, think about that. I think that time period was from, over the last four years. So we've cut our property tax rate, assuming this is correct, forty percent, right? So we've cut our property tax, taxes effectively forty percent of seventy-three million. We've cut them forty-two million dollars yearly, total cumulative, right? So if you think about it, well, anyway, we just need to understand those numbers so that when we're explaining this to the people, how are you gonna pay for this? Well, we've been fortunate enough, because of the growth in our property tax base and the increase in our sales tax, our county's been lucky enough where we've been able to cut property tax rates to the citizens forty percent while having three percent growth in our budget. Well, now we gotta invest in our school construction. And by the way, this is what it will look like. That's the reason I ask.
Yes, sir.
And by the way, it's very important that we just start talking to the public about, look, the need for our capital construction, you know, we'll get closer to the number as, as we get, but right now, it's four hundred million dollars. We need to talk about that, and people need to start a conversation among elected officials, among the public, among faculty and staff. And we just gotta start that conversation with the public while reassuring them that whatever we do, they will get value for their money. And then ultimately, the public's gonna choose whether they want to fund it or not. But we gotta show them how, what, what, what the plan would look like and how we're gonna fund it.
And now I'll ask Ms. Edmonds, if she'll take us through the other part of, of the background of, of my recommended budget, which is the expenses, estimating the expenses. Keynote I'll make here, and you may hear me say it again, these are based on historical data. Our expense estimates are based on historical data. So Ms. Edmonds?
Sorry, of those, twelve thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven are in Moore County, and fourteen hundred and forty are in charter schools.
You've heard me say many times that our county's investment in our public schools are not just to support our Moore County public school students, but all county of Moore students who attend either Moore County schools or a public charter school. And so that's over fourteen thousand students that that investment from our county and our board of commissioners goes to support. I just think that's a key piece to remember, that that goes to support each of those students.
And then looking at the charter school projected increase, fiscal year twenty-four's actual growth was only ten students, but twenty-three's actual growth was a hundred and thirty-eight. Our five-year growth average is a hundred and twenty students, so we used a conservative, conservative ninety students with a per pupil cost of two thousand and... So we used a conservative, conservative ninety students with a per pupil cost of two thousand, six hundred and fifteen, making a projected cost for fiscal year twenty-six for charter schools, two hundred forty thousand dollars. This is a look at our projected fixed cost increases for fiscal year twenty-six. We have salary scenario increases from two to four percent. We're going to focus only on the two percent increase. The fixed costs associated with projected state increases in salaries, retirement and health insurance contribution rates, the total of those fixed costs are eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our local supplement step increases for certified staff is two hundred fifty thousand. All other projected fixed toss, cost increases with a five percent inflation rate is three hundred fifty thousand. And our projected charter school growth is two hundred and forty thousand, making our total fixed cost one million, six hundred seventy thousand. With our revenue that we receive from the county of one million, one hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars with that three percent increase, it does leave us a shortage from the increased revenues versus the expenses of five hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars.
I would just, again, I just. I don't want to overstate this, but I also want to make it very clear that one of the reasons why Ms. Evans has done a great job with having scenarios with three percent, four percent, giving the board an idea, what if the state came back with more than what we're estimating with two percent? What would that look like? What would be the impact? Those scenarios do show that, but because of the historical data shows us over fifteen years, it's a little under two percent. It's your salary increase, and so that's why we're basing it on that two percent number.
We did take a look at budget efficiencies and savings, and we did find five hundred and seventy thousand. We had a board expansion budget item of ninety thousand. And when you look at our fixed costs with efficiencies and the expansion item, our fixed cost increases was one million, six hundred seventy thousand. Budget efficiencies were five hundred seventy thousand, and the board expansion item was ninety thousand, making our total fixed cost one million, one hundred ninety thousand dollars. This is a potential fund balance appropriation for fiscal year twenty-six with a two percent increase. You look at our twenty-four, twenty-five fund balance appropriated of two million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Our twenty-five, twenty-six projected shortfall of five hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars. Budget efficiencies of five hundred seventy thousand and the board expansion item of ninety thousand. Our twenty-five, twenty-six projected fund balance appropriation is two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars with a two percent increase. If it was a three percent increase from the state salary, it would be three million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven forty-two. And then that four percent is the three million, three twenty-three, seven forty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And again, as I bring you the revised recommended budget, the key narratives, the key pieces that are driving this budget, which I've already shared with you, is again, the need to take care of those fixed cost increases from the state based on our estimates, which is taking care of our people so that can take care of our students. You, you will see, as I've said, the unfreezing of the curriculum specialist position that's been supported by the board and bringing that back into the budget, of course, that position supporting our teachers at a higher level. And as I have, this being the fourth budget I've brought to you as a board, each year I've utilized a lean budget approach, try to moderate the amount of fund balance we're having to appropriate to balance our budget, utilizing any savings we have in this year's budget, rolling it into the next year's budget to moderate that. Finding savings and efficiencies again over the last two budget cycles, if the, if the board approves this, this recommended budget would be about a million dollars in savings and efficiencies. Conservatively estimating those increases from the county based on what they have communicated to us. And again, estimating those fixed cost increases based on historical data from the state. And so my revised proposed budget that I'm asking you to consider to become your Moore County Schools Board of Education preliminary budget is one in which incorporates the fixed cost increases incorporated by a two percent salary increases and increases on benefits of eight hundred thirty thousand dollars. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars for local supplement step increases for certified staff. Those inflationary non-payroll increases of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, projecting out our charter school growth for next year, which is one of those fixed costs we have to accommodate for at two hundred forty thousand dollars. Then incorporating the savings that Ms. Evans was able to find in the budget of five hundred seventy thousand. And that brings us to overall fixed cost of one million, one hundred thousand dollars. Then estimating that revenue from a three percent increase from the county at one million, one hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. That brings us on the plus side there of forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. We then incorporate the expansion cost of unfreezing that curriculum specialist position of ninety thousand dollars, which then brings our overall increased expenses to one million, one hundred ninety thousand. Putting that county revenue into the formula, that brings us at a deficit of forty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. We have to start with how much fund balance we incorporated in this year's budget and add that deficit to it, which means we would need to estimate a fund balance appropriation for the next year fiscal budget of two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to balance the budget from a local perspective. I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Evans to walk through where exactly that would, we estimate that would leave us with fund balance, where we would be based on where this budget was estimated from, and then take us through the breakdown of all funding types. Ms. Evans?
Our projected local fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four. Hundred thirty dollars. We've had a sign fund balance for immune force stabilization. There's a sign fund out for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, making our, and a sign fund out for twenty-four, twenty-five, two million, ten thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Our projected fund out for June, already, two thousand, twenty-five, which is projected as of January sixteen, two thousand, twenty-five, is five million, two hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Our projected fund out appropriation for twenty thousand, twenty-six, is two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. Leaving a projected sign fund out for twenty thousand, twenty-six, of two million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars. And of course, if there's a three percent increase, we would be at two million, eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. And if it's a four percent state mandated salary increase, it would be one million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars. This is our projected county allotment, our fund card for local funders' duty. We have local count operations of forty-five million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Public operations are twenty-three million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand, making our total local fund duty twenty-nine million, three hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Capital expense for fund four is eight hundred thousand. I'm sorry. My goodness. Is eight hundred thousand? And the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Fund Eight for, is, which is in PRC sixty-nine, is fifty thousand, making our total county allotment forty million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. This is our local revenue for Fund Two. You have, and this is the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary proposed local budget. For local current operations is thirty-five million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Charter school operations, three million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Making our projected county allotment for Fund Two, thirty-nine million, three hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Fines and forfeitures are four hundred fifty thousand, interest is a hundred and fifty thousand. And our local fund balance assignment is two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars, making our project, proposed Fund Two budget, forty-two million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. The twenty-five, twenty-six supernecessity proposed budget for Fund One state is a hundred and one million, one hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Fund Two for local expenses, forty-two million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Fund Three for federal is eleven million, four hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. Fund Four, capital expense, is one million, two hundred thousand. Fund Five for child, school nutrition is six million, four hundred five thousand, five hundred dollars. Fund Eight for restricted revenue is two million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars, making our proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget, one hundred sixty-five million, eight hundred six thousand, eighty dollars. And just to note, Funds Four, Five and Eight do not include appropriated fund balance, which is carryover.
I'm sorry. Can you go back to slide? School nutrition. Okay. I was going to ask, do you, do you know off the top of your head what the fund balance is in school nutrition and what we're required to keep?
Um, I do not have the number in, on the top of my head, but this, this is just a projected of what their budget will be, not including any of those carryovers.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the footnote. Yeah, okay. All right. Now, I just remember several years ago, we were significantly over our, in child nutrition, and we were figuring out ways to, to move that money. Want to see how that's going?
Yes, sir. To stay in North Carolina, I think I recommend two months of operating costs to be.
It has been, we have got, now significant. Not, not menu items. We've had, in order to increase those menu items and cook more, we've put in some new equipment, upgraded some stuff, some free.
Thanks, sir. Uh, and, and in, and in summary of the budget, again, anytime we're investing money in our school district, it is a reflection of our vision, mission, core beliefs and the strategic goals we're driving towards, again, to support student success. This budget is really focused on a continuation budget. What does it take to continue our current level of services, not denigrate that, but do that in the most efficient and effective manner as possible, taking care of our people so they can take care and help us accomplish our mission. Can't overstate that I truly believe and would be fired up about the fact that our local investment into our public schools is an investment to our community and our kids and in the second largest employer in the county. I think that's important to, to think about, and I certainly get fired up about that. And as I have over the last, this is now my fourth budget to present to you as a board, utilize a lean budget approach to help us moderate how much of that fund balance savings account we're having to appropriate each year to balance our budget, look for ways to save money in our budget and conservatively estimate our revenue and estimate as best we can what we think the state budget and where that's going to come in based on historical data. I want to thank the entire board for the time and effort you put in thus far. There's been several meetings several times that you've, you know, met and deliberated and given myself and Ms. Evans feedback or asked us critical questions as we put this budget together. I also want to thank our budget committee, of course, for your time and effort. And by the way, your meeting again on Thursday, thank you very much ahead of time for that. But Mr. Johnson, who's our chair of our budget committee, Mr. Hensley, who's a member of that, Dr. Calcutt, our board chair, who's a member of that, of course, Ms. Evans and myself, want to thank you for your time and leadership and anticipated work in the future. Our next steps as we move forward, again, that board committee meeting on Thursday. And then next Monday, you as a board will then be voting on this to become your budget. Could be some modifications on that based on your deliberation, but you'll be voting on this to become your budget, preliminary budget. We then will be submitting all materials to the county. We'll be presenting to them on May sixth. And then the county will work through their process. And on June nineteenth, the current plan is to vote on their budget on June nineteenth. So we'll know where we are from a local perspective at the end of June, and then we'll be waiting on the state for their process. Hopefully, Ms. Evans and I will be able to present what we call our original budget to you, which has got all the info from the state and local. We'll be presenting that to you in October. And in addition to this presentation, you also have all the budget background information that Ms. Evans puts together each year attached to the executive summary. Any small tweaks or changes to that are in red that you'll note. So that's kind of brought to your attention because there's, I don't know, seventy-five, eighty-five pages of that. So that brings any small tweaks or changes there to your attention. So open to any additional questions or discussion the board may have.
I feel like I'm always going first. Go ahead, Amy.
I don't know if this is really the place to say this, but this is directed at the budget committee members. It seems like there's a lot of uncertainty and increasing uncertainty about funding sources, about some costs such as potential raises and so forth. And I wonder if your committee would be open to considering whether we ought to adjust the fund balance floor to give us a greater cushion.
Well, I would, I would probably defer to the expertise of Dr. Luckler on that as far as what the floor should be and the historical piece of it.
Well, appreciate the thought. You're right. There is some uncertainty with that. And we've discussed with the board prior to this, either in committee or two-by-twos or possibly even in, in some work sessions, that there may be the potential that the board would have to waive the practice of maintaining our local fund balance, Fund Two fund balance at two million dollars because of some of those situations, because we're so close to that as it is. So there is that potential. I think it'd be appropriate for Ms. Evans and I to bring that recommendation to the committee and to the board first for your deliberation at that point.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention, first of all, thank you for all the work that goes into this. It's a, it's a lot of information shared in a lot of different ways, and I think that helps me personally to get my head wrapped around what it is. I wanted to thank the board and the staff for that unfreezing of that specialist position. I just think that our return on investment on that is going to be huge. I think I would love to keep track of that. So as we hire that, I did have a question as far as when this budget is approved, when would that be posted, I guess? Did you have any timelines on when that?
Well, I think that desire would be able to post that in order to have someone in, in place by the new year, the new fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six, would be bringing someone on board in July.
Great. And other than that, I, we're going to do committee, committee reports next, but since Amy brought it up, anything that you guys would like us to discuss in committee, please just send it my way. I'd be glad to bring it to the table and then report back in the future. So, but thank you.
I, I did just want to say, Mr. Johnson's is being very humble. He's the one who recommended unfreezing that position, and it was, it showed a lot of wisdom and a, a lot of commitment to, to Moore County schools by him making that suggestion. And I do believe, as we can see with these books right here, if, if we can relieve Ms. Gephardt to do other things and whoever it is that we hire, the, the return on investment, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, will be, will be great. Anything else? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Um, I have two things. One is the freezing of positions. What about the, you know, we haven't had our committee meeting yet, but there's a, a foundation committee meeting. I forget exactly what it's called, development.
Foundation committee. I think that first meeting's on April twenty-ninth.
Yeah, April twenty-ninth. So there's no, there's nothing in the budget for resurrecting or putting in place a development position. Is that something maybe we should budget for next year, or are you looking at the following year or a mid-year adjustment or something?
It's not something I'm currently recommending. We, we used to have, as you know, two, two members of the communications department. And I think that allowed them to be a little more actively involved with the foundation. That may be something to consider in the future, that you might have someone who's, who's able to be more actively involved in, in the foundation and supporting that work and perhaps doing some other work from a communications standpoint.
I'll be a little less politically correct on this, but I would expect if you're going to have a foundation and the foundation's going to be meaningful, and if we decide as a board to have a foundation, we're going to have to have a develop, a director of development. You know, you're either doing it or you're not, right? And if we want to go full throttle with a foundation, I just, just kind of in the back of your mind, I would, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a course of action that will probably be considered.
Yes, sir. And one thing to consider is that the foundation themselves hire that person. And it's, it's funded through the foundation through increased revenue they're bringing in. Someone to be a full-time foundation director that can really drive that work.
Right. Right. But somehow you got to get there. I'm not quite sure. But anyways, just in the back of your.
And I'll just add to that. I, we at some point in the county had a grant writing position. And I would love for that, if, if that position were to come out as a fundraising director, it'd be a natural fit to not only do partnerships and industry things like that, but also find a lot of the grants.
Maybe the foundation, you know, that there's, I think in my mind, we have a blank slate on this foundation committee, really, to go back to the drawing board.
And the return on that is, is quantifiable. Like you can hire this person at this salary, and then you can see what is the multiplier that they bring to the table, which would be, I would be all in favor. Like you can hire this person at this salary, and then you can see what is the multiplier that they bring to the table, um, which would be, I would be all in favor of that.
And the other thing, um, speaking of elephants in the room, in addition to, uh, you know, $400 million in construction, the other elephant in the room is, you know, there's a lot of talk about taking care of our people and this and that. And, uh, you know, at some point, we need to take quantifiable action. I think we need, this is probably more a strategic goal thing. And we probably ought to put this in our strategic goals, is revisiting our, um, locality pay for our faculty and staff. Because we keep saying, we need to take care of our people, we need to take care of our people, we need to take care of our people. It's expensive, right? But you gotta take care of your people pay-wise. And unfortunately, we cannot impact the legislature to the degree. You know, you guys have heard me say, if there was any justice in the world, all government employees would be getting five to six per, everyone needed a five per, five to six percent pay raise every year just to keep even with inflation over the last three years. I mean, you see it in our budget. We got it. You know, oddly, the school district got it. I don't know where all the money went, but we got it. I mean, you just look at the growth. But anyway, I think that we need to, um, look into revisiting locality pay. And you know, if you do your, if you do the math, what we spend probably 120 million a year on payroll, something like that.
Eighty-five percent roughly of our, of our money goes to people. Yeah.
So, you know, if you want to give a five percent pay raise to everyone across the board, that's a, that's a lot of money. Six million dollars, right? Assume it's 120 million dollars. So if it's $6 million, that would be a 15%. If we wanted to fund that locally, that would be a 15% increase from, you know what I'm saying? We'd have to get 15% more from the county to give all our people a 5%. And I'm just throwing this number out, right? But we should start talking about that, and we should put that in our strategic plan, is to revisit our locality pay. I mean, clearly, we're not gonna throw it in this budget, you know, in the ninth hour, but we should start talking about that.
And recruitment and retention is one of the priorities that you as a board put in this, the revised plan, so.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not all cash in pocket, but you know, it's certainly a part of it. And, and we haven't looked at, I know we haven't looked at in the last four years, and I think that some of the surrounding, we, when I got on the board, we were second of the six surrounding counties or five surrounding counties. I don't think we're second anymore.
Anything further? Okay. If not, we're gonna move to the school board meeting agenda for April 7th. So we'll just go through these items and see what we're gonna have for pending or, or, excuse me, for action or for consent. So out-of-state field trips, action or consent? Action. Community learning center at Pickney roof repair and replacement, action or consent? Consent. Standard day schedule, 25, 26, action or consent? Action, thank you, sir. Alternative accountability model participation for the community learning center at Pickney, action or consent? Consent, thank you. Purchase of K5 core instruction literacy materials, action or consent? Action, thank you. Amended fiscal year 24, 25 budget resolution for third quarter, action. Endorsement to gather public comment on Moore County Schools District Strategic Plan, action or consent? Thank you. Presentation of revised superintendent's proposed operating budget fiscal year 25, 26, action, thank you, sir. All right, now we'll move to the reports, information, and discussion for committee updates or reports. Want to start this side, Mr. Benway?
Sure. The only, the only thing I'd like to do is highlight the efforts of the Innovative High School. And I would even let Dr. Metcalf mention the latest checkpoint we just passed.
Thank you, Mr. Benway. Yes, very exciting day for us today. The letters of invitation went out for students who've been selected based on our rubric. Seventy-five letters go out today, uh, for students. The interviews, interviewed, uh, over 110, uh, students. Um, and 75, we have a waitlist past that of about 12 or 13 students. Uh, so very exciting. Um, you'll start seeing yard signs out in front of those students who have accepted, um, accepted their place at the, uh, more innovative high school. It's an exciting day for us. Appreciate the board's, uh, support of the program. It's coming into fruition, and it's a very exciting time. Thank you, Mr. Benway. You've been there from the very start. So we appreciate you.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
I've expressed interest, uh, I, well, I've expressed concern about the dispersion of innovative high school students, um, uh, throughout Moore County in the fact that the innovative high school is being not centrally located. Um, when the students are accepted, I would like, um, I mean, I can either get the raw data or a map, but I would like a graphical representation, either a spreadsheet of the students' addresses that I can figure it out myself, or a graphical representation of where the students are being drawn from for the innovative high school.
I just saw that raw data myself, and I'm encouraged that it represents all areas of our county. I think, uh, Mike probably could read it out. We also have a fair representation of, of non-MCS students who are coming into Moore County schools, uh, which was part of what I hoped we'd see happen, and I really thought we could if we offered this choice. So it's netting us some students who are not currently in Moore County, homeschool and charter and, and private as well, I believe. Um, but, um, Mike, you want to read those out real quick? And then we'll follow up with an email. Good question. We got the data right in front of us today, so, yeah.
Yeah, I like it when I can start to answer questions. I can tell you, not necessarily student addresses, obviously, but I can tell you from what schools our students are coming from, if that would be helpful to you. We have 20 students who are not currently enrolled in Moore County Schools, uh, that have been accepted. Two of those are homeschool, two from fellowship, two from Covenant Prep, um, and 12 from Stars. Uh, from North New Century Middle School, we have 14 students. Uh, Southern Middle School has 12, West Pine Middle has 10, Cranes Creek, uh, currently has four, West Moore Elementary has two, Elise Middle School has eight. Um, Moore Vonnissori, I think I said two, Connect, uh, currently at Connect. We have five students from them. It comes to a total of 75. So from all over the, all over the county. Um, yeah, some excited, some excited students. I will say that Ms. Sakuni interviewed all 110, had a team that interviewed all 110. She did that herself along with the team. Um, and those 75 students, uh, expressed tremendous interest in the program. Um, are a, a, a wide variety of students from different backgrounds. It's a very exciting time.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. And, uh, Dr. Metcalf, we can follow up with an email to the board. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, for the, for the budget committee, um, I don't have too many updates because I feel like we've been well updated uh, as far as all of our meetings, but I will reiterate, on Thursday, we do have our meeting at 10:00. Um, and if you have any questions or concerns or things that sparked in your mind before then, please just send them along my way, and we'll make sure to discuss, um, as we go. So that's all I've got.
Charlie, if you could, whoever, if you could bring up my presentation real quick. Um, while Charlie's bringing that up, I've got some handouts. I wasn't gonna pass these out. Uh, these are, I'm not gonna refer to them unless someone asks questions, but why this is getting pulled up. Uh, this is a handout that, uh, Ms. Purvis and her team put together for the committee meeting. And, um, I'm passing this out to you because there's some really good information in here that we're gonna be tightening up a bit and presenting to, uh, the board as a whole, uh, in our June work session. But, um, the, um, both media outlets did a good job on reporting some courses of action that were embedded in here. So if you read, uh, the pilot article, the Sand Hill Sentinel, uh, there were a couple of slides where they pulled information out of here. So I thought it was important that you guys have this. Uh, there's, anyway, there's really good information, uh, particularly on pages, uh, five and, uh, five and, um, seven. Five really illustrates the problem, uh, as far as our high school overcrowding. And seven, uh, lays out four really good courses of action. Again, I don't want to go into this in great detail, but I thought it was important that you have this.
Just noting, it's, it's in the draft minutes that are linked on the executive summary. So if the board wants to see electronically, they can go to our, the, the executive summary on, on our agenda and get to it.
Playing the paper, yes.
Just, just wanted to note that so they know that, Mr. Hensley. Thank you.
So what I wanted to do, um, and you can see up here, is I just think it's important, I just want to discuss what we discussed at the last meeting, what we have going on, uh, in our next meeting, and then solicit any inputs. Because like Steve said, look, the construction committee, it's your guys' committee. We're just, I'm just facilitating it, right? So if you guys have something you want looked into, just let me know, right? So I just think it's important to get that input. And again, as always, my goal is to get everyone's thoughts, inputs, and ideas as early as possible. So, next slide, please. So our meeting was last week. Um, we talked really about two things. Um, the Carthage Elementary, um, we've hired a real estate, and the real estate agent is diligently out looking for parcels. Uh, keep in mind, um, buying commercial land is different than buying a house. You know, most, uh, most commercial land doesn't have a sign out for sale. You know, the real estate agent calls landowners and LLCs and whatnot. So we've got a real estate agent out looking for parcels. Uh, we're seeking an architect. We don't need board permission to release the RFP, right? Right, that was my understanding. So no committee, no board action on that. And then we are, uh, we are actively, uh, seeking and looking for a purchase of land. A question I had is, what happens if we find a parcel we want to purchase? And it turns out that we do have walking around money in a fund balance that we can get our hands on if we find. In other words, we can purchase property without having to go to the county commissioners to ask for permission. Because, you know, it was a chicken or egg thing. Do you buy the property? Do you get the permission? We have money set aside to buy reasonable amounts of land. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, sir. Through state lottery money that we have not, uh, spent since the pandemic. Uh, we had the ESRA funds that supported a lot of projects, and we, we didn't have to expand our state lottery funds, which we get, uh, some of that each year from the lottery. Uh, we have a little over $5 million. Jenny? Yep, turn on your mic, here, Ms. Purvis. Yes.
About 5.6 million.
Thank you.
In that capital lottery.
And the process for that, Mr. Hensley, great point, is we would go, because it flows through the county commission, we would have to go to the county commissioners, request a certain amount to be dropped down into our fund so we could utilize it for purchase of land and for design services of an architect.
Yes.
Are we talking earnest money level?
No, we're talking, we, we have enough money to pay cash for anticipated land uses, purchases, yes.
And that's something that, based on your description, it can happen quickly?
Yes, I mean, that would be the hope, relatively quickly, that we, uh, are you talking about pulling the money or finding the land?
Uh, no, pulling the money.
Yeah, finding the land. We would hope to be quick, but it's gonna be a, a, you know, a look. Uh, pulling the money, each mon, each month, the, um, state takes applications for that on the 25th. And then the check for that money comes in within the first or second week of the next month. So, you know, we may be looking at taking something, um, to the county commissioners May, so that we could have money in June, um, just as we are working with architect and, and realtor. So, yeah, it's a pretty quick, uh, turnaround. The other thing I'll point out is that if we were to say, I'll just throw out, we're anticipating we're spending a half a million dollars, but we want to be safe, so we draw 550, then if we don't spend it all, if it ends up being 450, it just goes right back into our lottery account. They'll just pull it back. And if we were to need a bit more, then we could pull that out of our capital, uh, Fund Four, and then we would just withdraw more and repay our Fund Four back. So I talked with Mr. Hilton at DPI. There's really no, you know, no worries in pulling it and having, having it go back or getting more. It's a pretty simple process.
And is that, is that, um, so if you find a parcel that you want, and is that held until, is there any chance of between?
What I would recommend is, as we get a little closer to time, uh, in working with the realtor, we'll do an approximation of about how much money we think we're gonna need, and we'll go ahead and do an initial draw so that we have some sitting there. The issue is that, um, they're due on the 25th of every month, but even if we were to turn it in on the second or the third, they're not gonna look at them until the 25th. And so it's always, we, you know, if we turn it in at the beginning of the month, it's gonna get reviewed at the end of the month, and the pay comes the next month. So you're always looking ahead to say, we want to have it in in time.
Gotcha. Great.
But to answer, to answer what I think your question was, uh, let's say we find the perfect parcel, let's say tomorrow morning, you know, like, man, here it is. This is perfect, right? I assume that we would put some sort of instrument into place as a board to purchase it, which can be done in closed session. Purchasing land can be done in closed session. Selling land is, I think I have that right.
Correct. And if we had to have money to put down before we got our lottery money, that could come from Capital Four.
Gotcha.
And we would put, we would put some sort of, sorry, we would put some sort of instrument into place to have an option to purchase it with some sort of earnest money and then go public with the county commissioners, right? So someone does, your concern was, will someone buy it?
Coming in, yeah, yeah, after, yeah, great.
I think we can, I think we can do that within existing state laws. Uh, one other notice on, note on this, and, uh, I saw Ken there, um, uh, on the purchase of land. I was very, you know, something I'm very, very adamant about is, we need to make sure that our schools are in accordance with the county land use plan and their anticipated growth corridors. It just solves so much problems. It makes things less expensive. It cuts down friction. People will support it more. And, um, our superintendent was on the land use plan, uh, committee who put together the land use plan. And three or four places in that document, it referred at least two places, two to three places, it refers to, uh, coordinating with Moore County Schools as far as the placement of schools. And I think that's very important that we work closely with the county. So you'll see that. Uh, so that's really, uh, and then high school capacity, we looked at and discussed initial options. Again, you'll see those on page seven, rough draft, uh, options, and we decided a roadmap. And, um, there was a, there was a quote in a local paper about getting Dr. Doll and Dr. Calcutt up to speed. Uh, that is, look, are your committee members, it's very complicated. It's very, very complicated. And everyone can't be duty experts on everything, but what we want to do is we want to make sure members of your construction committee are duty experts. So one thing that we're doing is we're trying to find a time in month of May, is, uh, five years ago, 10 years ago, 10 years ago, there were modernization and expansion plans for Pine Crest and Union Pines that illustrates the challenges with doing that. The plans, we can't do it. We couldn't use those plans today if we wanted to. But it's a good way to get up to speed on the challenges of updating each of Pine Crest and Union Pines. So here's the roadmap that the committee is going to do going forward, is we're gonna have a committee meeting in the month of May, and we're gonna go through those plans in detail so that Dr. Doll, Dr. Calcutt, and myself truly understand all the difficult, difficulties in that. And then we're gonna put together a course of action brief for you guys, right? So, uh, with the intention of the June work session coming up and briefing you guys, the board, you know, you guys, the Board of Education, the initial framing and the initial courses of action. If you look in that packet I passed out, those course of action would be very similar to that. We're just gonna put price tags to it and some timing issues, right? There's some information we need to flesh out, and we need to be able to explain it very simply and very succinctly, right? So we're gonna put together a very focused brief. We're gonna become duty experts, and we're gonna brief you guys on June with the intention to then turn around, brief the county commissioners on the options. Get, we want to get your input, refine them a bit, get the county commissioners' input, maybe refine them a bit, then present it to the public in some sort of public hearing. And that'll be our first round of, of, um, of presenting the courses of action and getting input. And I, I think, um, I think we'll get plenty of input, and then we'll be able to turn around and, uh, you know, hopefully do a course of action decision, you know, certainly maybe a couple of months after that. So anyway, ambitious timeframe. You guys will hear back from us in June. Uh, next slide, please. Here is, uh, here's, I'll, I'll throw this up each and every time I brief, you know, I do a committee brief. You know, we've moved on to, as you can see up there, Carthage Elementary Replacement, that's moved on to detailed planning, right? So, uh, Ms. Purvis and her staff have hired an architect or looking for an architect, and they'll start the detailed planning. High school capacity and modernization, we've moved on to, uh, you know, we, uh, problem framing and stakeholder and initial stakeholder input and initial options are underway. And then we're gonna circle back around, uh, in our next meeting. That's the other, well, you'll see this in a minute. Uh, we're going to start the prod, we're gonna decide. We're going to start the prod, we're going to decide which projects we're going to start this process on next. Questions on this?
I just had one question, and I don't know the history of it, but the, the three elementary school modernizations, those being the prioritized list of modernizations, would there be, and I wasn't at the, the joint meeting with the commissioners. I unfortunately had to call in over the phone, which stunk. But there seemed to be some need for streamlining or packaging. Is there any thoughts to perhaps taking those three and putting them into the next priority? If that makes sense, or?
Well, what we're going to do, that, that's a good question and what, actually, I've got the answer for you, I think. If we go to the next slide, please. If you go to our next meeting, right, we're going to go through the previous modernization expansion plans I talked about a while ago, and that's to get everyone up to speed. We're going to finalize the options presented. Then the next thing you're going to see there, the second bullet, we're going to look at the school capacity charts for recommendations on the next projects. In other words, and we've discussed this, we've discussed with superintendent, that is, what you saw before was a prioritized list, but the priorities change, right? Depending upon, you know, what funding's available, you know, they, they shift a little bit. So we're going to take another look at the school capacity charts. The committee to come back to the board and recommend any changes in priority, if any, right? Because that's living and breathing. But what I really want to do is in the meeting, in the joint meeting with the county commissioners, the commissioner said, bring us a plan, bring us a plan. We've been saying, bring us a plan, right? Got you loud and clear. So everyone was thanking a school at a time, right? We're going to bring them the, the Carthage Elementary School because that barn, you know, that, that cow, that horse already left the barn, right? You know, we're already down there. So we'll bring them a detailed standalone plan on that. My goal is, is after the high school modernization plan, we, we present to them a comprehensive plan that shows everything, all 10 projects, the total price tag for everything and a time phase. One of the things we're waiting for, and Ms. Purvis is working on this, I hope, is to get notional timelines for everything, right? So let's say build, you know, expand Cranes Creek. You know, maybe that's a two-year project, $5 million, right? Maybe it's a three-year project, $10 million, but say it's two years and $7 million. Well, building a high school, well, you got a bond issue, it'll take a couple of years. You know, you've got realistically four years before you break ground and seven years before you occupy it ideally. Well, we're not going to do anything. We're not going to sit on our hands for four years while we're waiting to build a high school. You know, we've got stuff we're going to do in between. So what your committee is going to do is we're going to take this whole project that everyone's really talked about, but no one's really said, okay, citizens, we need $400 million, right? We're going to conceptualize what that would look like over a decade and we're going to time phase it and say, look, here's what we need. Here's how much money we need when. And if you buy off on this plan, this is what we need and then we're going to let the public decide. But the goal is, is to present a comp, you want a plan? Okay, here's the plan. It's the whole enchilada.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because there was another comment made in the joint meeting and there, and all these comments are right. You know, bring us a plan. That's 100% correct, right? Where we decide to bring you a comprehensive plan, right? Because the other comment that was made is, look, we're just here for the next two years and we're just here for the next four years and then other people are going to come along and, you know, it just isn't ever going to get executed. Well, if that's how you believe, you're right, it'll never get executed. That's why if we go through this planning process, we, we include the entire school board. We include all the county commissioners. We include all the public. Then, and everyone buys off on the comprehensive plan, hopefully it survives all of us and maybe get adjusted from time to time, but hopefully it, it transcends all of us and we actually get an eight to 10-year plan funded and executed. That's my goal.
Only thing that caught, that caught my attention was when we were visiting, me and Robin went to visit Pinecrest and it was really helpful for us. I don't, we didn't even really ask, but as we were walking around the building, Stephanie Phillips was able to tell us some of the modernization pieces that they had talked about before and what they were looking at. And it helped me to just be standing in the space and seeing what she was talking about. And so I know Jenny knows that front and we're in the back, but it might be worthy of the construction committee members to stand in the space and listen to Andy or Stephanie to talk about, you know, physically what it looks like.
Yeah, my only, my only guard to that would be that those 2015 plans were put in place with the intention of expanding some classrooms and adding space, depending upon what choice the board chooses. Those change, those plans are really going to change.
Gotcha.
Because we are looking at the possibility of not expanding those spaces. So if we're not expanding those spaces, then how would we change the spaces that are there? Modernize and renovate, yes. And so that may look very different, Mr. Johnson. I, I would not say that we would base anything that, off of those 2015 plans. Correct. Well, and they were going to modernize at the same time, but the, if we don't go in that direction and we go in the direction of a new high school, that whole ball changes.
Steve, the other thing too is, and we have to change our thinking on this, is previously, the previous regime group superintendent and his team, right? They wanted, in my opinion, they wanted to do these big glorious projects. So they, like, they had a plan to modernize Union Pines and you look at it and you're like, man, this makes sense, right? But there's relatively low cost stuff that they could have done in this plan over the last 10 years. That, I mean, there was one park queuing thing where you move the, where the, where the band drills right out front. You move that over here and that becomes a field and then you do the queuing. So there are, if, if we know what we're working towards, right? Then we don't have to do these big grandiose take it or leave it $60 million projects or 40, because we may not have the money, but like if we know what we're going on Union Pines, and I'm making this number up, say it's $50 million to renovate and modernize. Well, there's small chunks that we could do if we know what the end goal is and we work towards that. There's stuff that, there's interim steps that we can do and take care of it as money's available rather than to do this big grandiose project. At some point, you got to do the big grandiose project, but there's all kinds of stuff on the satellite orbiting around that that could have been done and should have been done five or six years ago. So we got to, you know, if we know where we're going, then we can take smaller bites along the way. That's my point.
Is it time for me to get a word in edgewise?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at the risk of, of committing a spoiler here, we, my colleague mentioned that we had four good options here and I feel that I should say something about that because in our committee meeting, we discussed that one of these options would likely be extremely costly, have a poorer return on investment and create really hard to imagine how we would surmount logistical difficulties. And so I don't want people to go forward with the expectation that these are all equivalent options.
Oh, they're not equivalent. No, correct. They're not equivalent at all.
Um, the way what you said came across to me, I wanted to add that.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
And, and our, our plan to examine the 2015 plans was so that we could come back to the full board with a little greater understanding of some of the logistical questions and, and better equipped to answer questions, you know, of the full board. And I, I think Mr. Hensley made that clear, but I just wanted to reiterate it.
Well, let me, let me, let me jump, expound upon what you said. It was interesting because there was a story online about the four options. And I didn't intervene, you know, the reporter just, you know, reported kind of sort of what was said. And the public really got engaged in the conversation. And in my mind, you look at the four courses of action, Dr. Doll's right. I mean, there's one, if you, you know, once you understand it, you'll just kind of mentally throw one out and that leaves you. What's interesting is I watched the public's reaction to the course of action and they kind of almost immediately notionally gravitated just from that one slide, just from how it was communicated on that one slide. Everyone pretty much navigated, automatically went to one of the two most, at least in my mind, affordable and viable options, even though we didn't have costs associated with them, even absent a cost that, that my point is an informed public's generally going to reach the correct decision. Okay, and then the next.
I'll just ask because I don't know. I didn't, I didn't read the comments. Was there, was it, which one?
I, I will just, no, I, I will tell you this. There are, no, no, that's good. I, I pass this out. If you look at the four courses of action, the first one, expanding Pinecrest is extraordinarily difficult. Explo, expanding for what?
2015.
Yeah, for what you would spend to, to, to expand Pinecrest, it would be cheaper to build another high school.
Gotcha.
Well, and Mr. Johnson, those 2015 plans, if we were to use them today, we're out of capacity once they get built.
Gotcha, right.
So, and the difficulty in that is that those 2015 plans added seats, but they did not expand the core. We can't add enough seating with the current cores that are there. We'd have to expand the cores as well.
And that's where we want to make sure we explain to everyone, you know. Okay, so next meeting, we're going to, we're going to, as you saw up there, we're going to look at the, the plans that were developed a decade ago. We're going to look at the high school capacity charts for recommendations on next projects. And we're going to look at, we're going to start looking at potential dual-use facilities that we can put in for conventional visitor bureau grants. So, you know, they're going to have about $3 million a year that they can spend on things to increase tourism and our recreational facilities help increase tourism. So we'll look at things to put in and compete for that grant money. And then the next slide is, you guys got anything you'd like for us to look into? Ms. Bruno, you had some water or something? I've been made to ask you about that. Do we need to look into that or has that been settled? Water test, quality test or something?
Oh, I, I, Dr. Locklear said he was going to present that in May?
We should have information. It's due by May, right?
Yeah, we had four schools. At the time you sent that email, Ms. Bruno, I can't remember how long ago that was. We had four schools that we were still waiting on the state to send us the test bottle, the test kit so that we could return the water. Some of those schools have already received their results and those results are posted online. Some of the schools, we've submitted the water, but we don't have the results back yet. Those four, I'm sure, are submitted by now because it's maybe been a month or so since you've sent us. But what I didn't want to do and what I suggested to Dr. Locklear is I didn't want to send them to you piecemeal. The state is not expecting all of them to be in until May 31st. We're having, ours are in way ahead of time. But what I'd like to do is send you the comprehensive review of all of them. However, they're all online right now, so any schools that are already in, the results are up there. But once they're all posted, I'll do a little, I'll share all with you at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the only thing I had a question about was, and maybe it's a 1B and I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters, but the question has, has been, you know, what happens to the, now that we've decided to move forward on a new Carthage building on a new site, what happens to the old Carthage building? And what is that, what do those options look like and when does that get brought forward? So I was just, you know, making sure, I'm, I'm sure that's part of the thing, but make sure that was brought up.
One of the lessons learned from the previous schools is everyone's your friend. When you're building them a nice new school, the minute you open up that school and you're trying to dispose of the old school in their same jurisdiction, all of a sudden they're your adversary, right? We're not going to make that mistake is before we break ground on our new site, we're going to have to the greatest extent possible, a plan on what we're going to do with the old site and have it, you know, I mean, there's laws that have to be adhered to, but if they're going to be repurposed within the county or, you know, more county schools, we're going to know that before. We're going to have, we're not going to end up like we did last time. Because I caught the tail end of that. It's just like, here's four, three properties you got to get rid of. That was horrible.
And I like the idea of getting the public's input on that too, so I think that makes sense.
Well, look at what Aberdeen's doing. I mean, that's going to be an awesome site when they get that.
Yeah, I saw the pictures. I'll be interested to see how that turns out.
Well, I would just note, I respect that perspective, but we also got to look from a fiduciary standpoint with that property and what, what is most, you know, best to look at from the fiduciary business side with hanging on that property, renovating that property or selling the property. What would be best for the school district to then be able to reinvest those funds into other capital needs, which you can do with the sale of that property. So you'd really have to look at that. Not that we don't want to get the public's input, but if we know it's not, from a business fiduciary standpoint, we need to be clear and communicate that to the public. But I'm, you know, I don't know if we'd want to be asking for input. I always go by the notion, don't ask for input if you're not actually going to take it. So if from a business fiduciary standpoint, it was not a good idea to go down that road, I would just caution the board to, as we go down, which is still two, three years down the road till we get to that point, hopefully maybe quicker, but that we kind of educate ourselves on that first.
Yeah, and, and trust me, we're not going to give that property away. We're going to make sure that we maximize our return on it. I mean, we're not donating the property to anybody. We want to, we want to come up with plans to maximize our revenue or maxim, you know, we very well may keep it, we may use it ourselves. Or if we're going to sell it, we need to maximize our revenue with that. But the way we maximize our revenue is work with town leaders, you know? And boy, we could have, we could have made millions of dollars if we'd have partnered with Southern Pines on either one of those properties. We could have gotten millions of dollars per acre for either Southern Pines Elementary or Southern Pines Primary. But, you know, the Southern Pines town leaders had no appetite for anything other than giving that prop, effectively giving that property away. We're not going to make that mistake with these. We're going to, we're going to work with town leaders and political leaders to maximize our return on that property within existing laws.
May I make a comment? I'd like to point out an anomaly here. We readily lay out a 10-year construction plan looking down, down the road, yet our strategic vision only goes out two years. I, I suggest that our strategic vision ought to inform that construction, construction plan and be derivative, that construction plan be derivative of a, of a strategy that looks out 10 years, at least 10 years. So I think we've got some more homework to do actually. And I'd like to toss that out for some board discussion we can. That's all I have.
Are you asking for future board discussion or in the moment discussion? Yeah. Okay.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, just to frame it a bit, right, our strategic plan is four years, right? Two. Strategic plan's two years, right? Well, it's, you know, school board elections every two years. So really the, really what you're saying is, is our strategic plan time horizon too short? Is that what you're suggesting?
A strategy can be institutionalized and it does not depend on the mix of the board. I mean, they'd have to be re, revalidated periodically, re-looked, modified as we progress along. But always stay 10 years ahead of yourself looking out.
We can put this for an additional agenda item or we can discuss it now, whichever, whichever you prefer.
I don't know that right now would be the appropriate time.
Let me go ahead and frame it up on a one pager and submit it.
Okay.
My only, my only input, since you brought it up, if you're going to put together, you know, a, a memo on this is, you know, the concerns that we have is there's election every two years and new board members. years, and new board members. I assume that's why the strategic plans every two years, because an incoming board's probably going to want to take a look at it. So you've got the challenge of your board turning over every two years, four years, six years, so that's one thing. The other thing I would, the other thing I would, and these are just random thoughts, is, look, whether you're, whether you're banning Heather Has Two Mommies, or you're using it as the basis of your curriculum, right, you need the same facilities. So regardless of what you're teaching, for the most part, you would need the same facilities, with the exception of specialized things such as an advanced career center or whatnot. So I guess my question is, what long-range planning would we have to do to plan our facilities, other than population projections? I mean, what, what would impact our facilities, other than student population?
The concept of teaching, things change over time. We adapt, the requirement drives construction. As, as academics mature over time, I suspect they will affect the, the construction requirements, among other things. Another thing is, hopefully someday we will have a Moore County vision and strategy that would look out 10, 20 years also, and that would inform how we approach the delivery of students to that, to that environment. So I think there's nothing to be lost by having a 10-year horizon for, for this school, school system. That's updated, it becomes a living document, the closer you get to that, that first 10-year stretch, the more solidified it becomes. I mean, we don't, we don't change, when the Army changes Chief of Staff, it doesn't change the long, the long-range vision for that organization. It doesn't hurt to have a long-range vision.
I would, so how, how long-range is the land use study that?
Twenty years.
So it, so that could be part of the answer, is us having that active piece.
There's a convergence of all of these things here.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's worth our playing in that arena.
Well, we certainly need to be in sync with the county, right? And then they've got a long-use plan, a long-range plan, we need, we certainly need to have flexible facilities, you know?
I think one of the things we have to remember when we're looking at the master priority plan, and knowing it's going to take 10 or 12 years to get all of that done, we have to be, we have to know what we need to get done, but realize that when the point in time comes and the funding is there, the specificity of that project may change from what we expect it to be today. So if we look at those 2015 plans, we would, there are things that we would have done very differently. If those plans were to work for capacity today, I would still say that we need those updated, because safety has changed so much since 2015. So I think that we can have an initial plan of what needs to be done, but as we get to the point of funding for each of those plans, we would look at the specifics of where we are, as you say, with teaching and learning at that time, and where we are with safety, and that's when we would come in with specifics.
Sure. I agree totally. Yep.
Let me, let me say this, if I can make a big capstone, as kind of the grand old man of the school board, right? So you talk about long-range plans. Four years ago, the strategic plan did a big U-turn. The strategic plan was headed down here, and it did a U-turn, and it came back this way. This iteration, two years, two years later, the iteration of the, of the strategic plan is incremental. It, it's really reinforcing the bus, this strategic plan, the bus is headed this way, and we're just reinforcing it ahead. So I would say that, based upon that, that, that our current strategic plan is pretty much long-term, because it's pretty much getting adopted a second, second time, with some minor changes. The, the growth plan, the county growth plan, is, is absolutely imperative, as I've mentioned before, that we synchronize with. So I guess my, I'm rambling, but I guess my point is, is that I think we're probably pretty close to our long-range strategic plan. You know what I'm saying? The equal importance of VOTAC, service, so we, you know, we're building our facilities around that, and I don't know what you, I don't know what we could foresee that would change our facilities significantly.
If, if we have this notion of maturing our, our approach to teaching and learning, over the last 20 years, we've watched a steady decline in student performance.
Right.
Neither the, neither the General Assembly, nor DPI, or the, the Council of State, has done anything to intervene in that, in that, that slide, except on the periphery, nickels and dimes, but there is no relook, no reconsideration of the, the first principles of teaching and learning in North Carolina. You won't find that, that notion anywhere. I think, in, in the absence of North Carolina providing that, I think we need to develop our own. Moore County approach to teaching and learning, if you will. And as we look down the road, we're going to see opportunities that we can begin projecting, earmarking, begin to what-if, develop courses of action, for exam, for, for analysis, and I think it's just a, a healthy exercise, to begin looking, looking down 10 years out. 10 years out goes like that. We had 2015 plans for, for Pinecrest. Here we are 10 years later, still talking about it, still trying to figure out how we're going to, going to work that in. So I'm just saying that I think a, a healthy horizon for planning is a good thing for the community.
Well, Mr. Benway, I can tell you this, we have our, we're going to have our 10-year capital plan, which we're going to work diligently to try to get funding for, so that 10 years later, we're not talking about expanding Pinecrest or modernizing it. We have the 20-year land use plan, and we have our four-year strategic plan, so within all the framework of this, I can assure you of this, we're going to build the best value facilities in the correct locations to support our projected student population, and we'll make it as flexible as possible, you know, that's part of the modernized classroom, I think flexibility comes in there. And then, you know, the idea is the plans are there, and then, as Ms. Purvis said, when we, when we start the detailed planning, we'll build, then, the detailed planning will be to the best of our requirements, as they're understood right then. But I don't, look, I, I'm just telling you that your construction committee here is to support that, and, you know, we'll, we'll support that, but as far as a long-term, 10-year capstone strategy, that's beyond my pay grade, you know?
Understand, yes. I'm just pointing out the anomaly of having a 10-year construction plan versus a two-year strategic plan.
Well, look at their insane budget cycle, you know, you got the state, and the county, and the school, and...
So as long as we have a, a recognizable, deliberate, and disciplined process, looking, going down the road, I think we come out ahead.
I assure you that we'll have that, and I assure you that if we have plans that make sense, and it's deliberate and inclusive, we'll have the support of the people of Moore County, too.
Yep.
Or we won't, but at least we know where we stand, right? We've done our best, right?
They'll know it was coming.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. I think, yeah, yes.
I do want to say something before we leave this topic.
Please do.
All right, so, reference was made to a, I, I think it was a 20-year slide in student performance. My observation is that in the last 20 years, the way we, what we expect of students has changed a great deal, and the way we evaluate performance has changed a great deal, and I certainly have not seen any convincing data that supports the idea of a, a 20-year And I don't even know how we could evaluate that, given the changes in what we're asking students to do, and the changes in how we measure it, but do our staff have anything to say on that topic? Do we see a trend over 10, or 20 years in student performance? Are we even able to measure it?
I would be remiss to try to answer that off the, off the cuff, other than say, over the, over the 30 years of my career, there's been a plethora of different types of assessments and tests, and renorming of what we expect our students to perform on, whereas, you know, when I first started in education, I was in a very different place than what we're expecting out of our students today. So I can say that, but I would be remiss to say any kind of trend data, or anything specifically like that, from a national perspective. I really couldn't speak to it. But do I believe that we, we are in a place in Moore County where we do have our own Moore County Schools way, that we are looking at developing specific instructional frameworks, and we have developed, and we are implementing them, and under the, the guidance and expertise of some real superstars like Donna Gephardt, and, and our teachers who work adamantly do it, I think we're on the right path, I think we're seeing increased student performance as a result of that. But I would always argue that the results of our work as educators is when they cross that stage, and where they're heading at that point of graduation, no matter what their test score says. I think there's a lot of other examples of success that we have as a school district that, now I'm starting to get fired up, that we have as a school district that we can tell, we can tell that story quite a bit, but I'd be remiss to try to quote any kind of data, anything like that.
And if I could just inject real quick, I think all of those great things that are happening here in Moore County are a result of some real dedication, but I think it, if it can be institutionalized, and projected down the road, over a course of 10 years, and how we want to, to add to that, and, and build on that success, I think that's part of the lookout, look 10 years is, is part of that. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not condemning Moore County whatsoever. I'm condemning North Carolina, though. We sit on the lowest quote quintile in the nation, number 43. That, that, that's, I think, last month's data. So I think Moore County needs to rise above that, and do our own thing.
I know that the amount spent on education is very low, but what specific metric are you saying that we're currently 43rd in? I'm sure that fluctuates all the time.
Yeah, I've got to dig that out. I don't have the precise, precise thing off the top of my head, but I'll pull the report, national report.
Okay. You know, because I, you know, one hears snippets from the National Assessment of Academic Progress, is it my educational progress, or some other measure, and it would be good to know, you know, which metric we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, I'll dig it out.
All right, that, whoop.
Oh, no, I can answer Ms. Doll's question, Dr. Doll's question. Look, Mr. Benway's point is a good point, right? But it doesn't matter, because here's what matters. I can tell you that despite what's happened in the past, you know, whether it's Common Core, sight words, or getting away from phonics, or, you know, regardless of what, what's happened in the past, Moore County's, and you guys have heard me say this before, Moore County Schools has the right team, we got the right programs in place, and academically, everything, in my opinion, is headed the correct way, and it's the team, it's the team, Dr. Locklear and the team he's put together. In my opinion, again, forget what's happened, you know, whether it's done this, or done this, or done this, whatever, we are on the right path, and in my opinion, the big, you know, let's just keep the, you know, rudder changes here and there, you know, the experts have that. I mean, this building's full of, you know, education experts, you know, the big thing that's on my mind, and in my, my opinion, the thing that we really need to get back on track is our school's construction and capital expenditure. We just need to nurse this other stuff going along. The thing that we really got to make up time for is the capital construction. You know, there may be some other stuff. The foundation's another thing, the foundation, the capital construction, everything else stuff is going the right way, in my opinion.
And I'll just, I'll just add, that locality pay is another thing to look at, and we, which is in our strategic plan, obviously, we have this great staff, how are we retaining them, and, yeah, so that's, I agree.
So I have a question for Mr. Benway here. So I'm inclined to agree with the sentiment that Mr. Hensley recently mentioned, that we're where we are in large part because of our people. And you talk about institutionalizing successes. Am I correct in hearing that you somehow want to capture what our people are doing, and make it permanent in some way? Okay. I, I, I do not envision this at all, but I look forward to hearing more from you about it.
I think we have the opportunity to capture this sort of thing, and work it into our repertoire, if you will, and how we project down the road, leveraging those things. That's, kind of, business 301 kind of stuff.
Okay, I'm not the 301 in business yet.
All right. I, I think we've had a healthy amount of our reports, information, and discussion. Does anybody have board comments, some closing comments, or could we adjourn the meeting? Yes, go ahead, please. Just the microphone, though. Thank you. I want to clarify some remarks I made at last month's session. What I wanted to convey was that in the course of performing a job that has many moving parts, it can be a challenge to remember to apply our principles in every situation, so spelling them out in the strategic plan can aid implementation. Let me state clearly, I never witnessed discrimination toward any student at Northmore High School. In fact, the opposite is true. Respect is a core value in that community that inspires me to want to ensure all Moore County students experience the same treatment. Furthermore, the staff at Northmore is representative of the community to a degree that should be the envy of any school in America. Thank you.
I'll just say amen to what Dr. Doll said. I mean, I don't know how many multi-generational, you know, educators we have at Northmore Schools, but anyway, that's all I have.
All right, very good. Well, if that's, if that's everyone, I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second? All in favor? All right. Thank you.